Wait, 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 I gotta start it first. So wait until I can, I say y'all, okay?
All right.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we'll open the meeting and according to my notes, present at the meeting is Mary Masiallo, Arthur Rouse, Craig Chadwick, Alan Peterson, and Bill Stokes. Now, does anybody else speak up? Other than that, so I have basically Duncan Barry and David Harris who are not, are not present. Do a call to order pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law's Chapter 38, paragraph 20, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing restrictions on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Howard's Training Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to view or view this meeting while in progress may do so by logging in or calling in as specified above on this agenda. We'll proceed to the agenda. The first matters on the agenda are public hearings and the first case is PB 2020-08, Davenport Companies' applicant, Chair of Paul Sweetser, PLS representative, seeks approval of a used special permit with waiver for two family dwellings pursuant to the code of the town of Howard, paragraph 325-13A, 51 and 51N, as set forth in Mass General Law's Chapter 48, Paragraph 9. Property was located at 429 Queen Anne Road, Lot 1, Map 70, parcel B1 in the R-M District. I'm also gonna read the second case because we're gonna take them both a bit.
Mr. Chairman, one at a time.
All right, okay. So PB 2020-08, Davenport Companies' applicant. Can we hear from the applicant or their representative?
Yes, this is Paul Sweetser speaking. I was actually gonna ask if we could do it as a two-for-one, because we basically have two lots and we're representing the same thing on both lots. We have two duplexes. We're actually asking for the special permit and we've asked for one waiver and we were hoping to get it done tonight. You have the plans in place and I believe also that you've seen many of the Davenport plans come before you. Places as simple as this and it's something that's very needed now. Do you have any questions? I'd be happy to answer and Christian Davenport is on the line also at the same time.
Okay, is there, is, is, I have the matters before me and the plans. Is there anybody on the board who wishes to be heard?
Joe, it's Mary Maslowski. Can we have Charlene's report? Can we have Charlene's report to start?
Actually, you can bail me out. Can we hear, can we hear Charlene's report, please?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul Sweetser over, we already ran over the waiver, which is a requested waiver from Article 2, Section 400-17A1A, requiring a signed and notarized affidavit by the owner stating that he or she will live in one of the units on a year basis. Comments from other boards and/or committees, Health Department, as plan is proposed, the Health Department has no issues of concern, a fully compliant septic system must be approved prior to any building permit sign-off, no variances from state or local regulations will be granted, Fire Department has no concerns, it is a much-needed project, Police and Conservation, no concerns, and Highway, they must pull a driveway permit. With regard to my comments, all the requirements pursuant to Section 3.5-51N have been met. We do recommend stormwater generated on the site should be maintained on the site and we are recommending that as a condition. As Mr. Sweetser indicated, there is a strong need for rental units within the town of Harwich. The requested waiver is reasonable, conditions are imposed, and just, just to note that because of the governor and special legislation that was in, that was enacted, the statutory 20-day appeal period is stayed until such time as declared emergency is over. So even if the board approves, assuming the board approves the plan tonight, we get the decision letter in by the end of the week, the 20-day appeal period will not start until the emergency is declared over. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that. And that's my report. Thank you.
I do think the record should reflect that the Health Board has given us a comment that as the plan is proposed, the Health Department has no issues or concerns, a fully compliant septic A fully compliant septic system must be approved prior to any building permit sign-off, no variances from state or local regulations will be granted, Highway tells us that they must pull a driveway permit, which I think you commented on, Police and Conservation-
I made all those comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and the Fire and the Police and Conservation have no comment. Okay, members of the board, anybody have any questions or comments on this particular case?
Mr. Chairman, this is Arthur Rouse. I'd like to ask just one question, please.
Go ahead.
I'm not sure who this goes to, but I'm curious. What's the maximum number of years that he or she will live in one of the units on a year-round basis? Is there a-
Counsel for the, for the applicant, can you respond to that?
We ask for a waiver that the, the owner would not have to live in the units. It's a standard waiver.
That's not the way it reads. I'm familiar with the waiver, but I'm not sure that's his question.
If I might, Mr. Davenport, I'm presuming that this rental will be similar to all other rentals that you, you operate and that it is a year-round rental, not a seasonal rent.
That's correct. That's correct, yeah.
Okay, anybody else on the board have any other questions or comments for the applicant in this matter? Okay, I want to attend a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we, it's Mary Maslowski. I move that we close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Craig Chadwick, second. Craig Chadwick, second.
Motion by Mary, motion by Mary Masiallo, Masiallo, second by-
Mr. Chadwick.
Oh, Craig Chadwick, and we'll have a roll call vote. Mary Masiallo?
Aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Aye.
And Bill Stokes?
Aye.
And Joe McProwl, aye. Okay, let's go with votes here now. I think we, we have to vote to close the public hearing, don't we?
You just did. We just did.
Okay.
So, so, this is Mary Maslowski.
Go ahead.
So I mo, I move that we vote to approve the waiver from Article 2, Section 400-17A, Paragraph 1, Subparagraph A, requiring a signed and notarized affidavit by the owner stating that he or she will live in the, in one of the units on a year-round basis.
Do I have a second?
Craig Chadwick, second.
Okay, all those in favor? Do we have to do a roll? Okay, we'll do a roll call. Bear with me. Mary Masiallo?
Yes.
David Harris? No, I'm sorry. Arthur Rouse?
Yes.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Aye.
Bill Stokes?
Aye.
Joe McProwl, aye. Okay, now, Mary.
So, Joe, this is Mary Maslowski. I move that we approve with conditions a used special permit.
I don't mean to interrupt. Did you want to do the proposed findings?
I did.
No, we didn't.
Oh, I jumped right over, I'm sorry.
Nope, that's okay.
I move that we adopt the following findings of fact. One, the lot contains a minimum requirement, requirement of 40,000 square feet of upland. Two, each dwelling's unit floors area is greater than 800 square feet minimum requirement. Three, a common roof connects the dwelling unit. Four, the parcels provide sufficient access for two spaces for each unit. Five, the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Six, the specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. And seven, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
Do I have a second?
Bill Stokes, second.
Okay, and we'll have a roll call vote. Mary Masiallo?
Yeah.
Arthur Rouse?
Yes.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Aye.
Bill Stokes?
Aye.
Joe McProwl, aye. Okay, takes care of the findings of fact. Can we now move on to approve? I think we can, Mary.
Now I move that we approve with conditions a used special permit with waivers for PB 2020-08, Davenport Companies, for two family dwelling pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, Section 325-13 dot A, dash 51 and dash 51N, as set forth in Mass General Law's Chapter 48, Section 9, for property located at 424 Queen Anne Road, Lot 1, Map 70, Parcel B dash 1, in the R dash M District, based on the aforementioned findings of fact and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval, with the following conditions. One, all stormwater runoff generated within the subject property shall be controlled and infiltrated on the subject property. Two, the special permit decision shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. And three, any changes to the plan shall be subject to further planning board review.
Do I have a second?
Second. Craig Chadwick, second.
Bill Stokes, second. Okay, and we'll have a roll call vote. Mary Masiallo?
Yes.
Arthur Rouse?
Yes.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Aye.
Bill Stokes?
Aye.
Joe McProwl, aye. That takes care of, I believe, that thing, that matter in its entirety. We'll move on to the next matter on the, on the agenda. The PB 2020-09, Davenport Companies' applicant, Chair of Paul Sweetser, PLS representative, seeks approval of a used special permit with waiver for two family dwellings pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, 325-13A, 51 and 51N, as set forth in Mass General Law's Chapter 48, Number 9, property located at 424 Queen Anne Road, Lot 2, Map 70, Parcel B1 in the R-M District. Do I have a second?
You already opened it.
Craig Chadwick, second.
Okay, all right, that opens it. And we'll hear from the applicant or his representative.
Hey, this is Paul Sweetser again. And if I may, I would like to say ditto for the last one. And as soon as we move forward.
Anybody on, on, on the board have any questions of Mr. Sweetser? Okay, uh, bear with me.
Can we have Charlene's report again?
We're getting to it. Just give me a second. I have to go to the next page, Mary. Okay, we'll hear from the planning director, please.
Thank you very much. Again, there are waivers, there is a waiver requested pursuant to Article 2, Section 417A1A, requiring a signed and notarized affidavit by the owner stating that he or she will live in one of the units on a year-round basis. The comments from other boards and committees, Health, as the plan is proposed, the Health Department has no issues or concerns, a fully compliant septic system must be approved prior to any building permit sign-off, no variances from state or local regulations will be granted, Fire has no concerns, this is a much-needed project, Police and Conservation, no concern, Highway, a, a driveway permit must be pulled. Planning comments, the requirements pursuant to Section 325-51N have been met, stormwater generated on the site should be maintained on the site, there is a strong need for rental units within the town of Harwich, the requested waivers are reasonable, and standard conditions are recommended, and just another note that the statutory 20-day has been stayed until the emergency is lifted. And that's my report.
Okay, anybody on the board have any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
And motion by Alan, motion by Alan Peterson, second.
Bill Stokes, Arthur Rouse, second.
Okay, second by Mr. Rouse. And we'll have a roll call. Mary Masiallo?
Yes.
David, oh, I'm sorry, I'll keep doing that. Arthur Rouse?
Yes.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Aye.
Alan, Alan Peterson?
Aye.
And Bill Stokes?
Aye.
Joe McProwl, aye. Okay, I think we are ready now to move to close the public hearing.
You just did.
You just did.
Okay, how about Mary, if you can, proposed findings?
So I move that we adopt the following findings of fact. One, that the lot contains a minimum requirement of 40,000 square feet of upland. Two, each dwelling unit's floor area is greater than 800 square feet minimum requirement. Three, a common roof connects the dwelling units. Four, the parcels provide sufficient access for two spaces for each unit. Five, the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Six, the specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. And seven, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
Any sec, do I have a second to that? Bill Stokes? Bill Stokes, uh, seconds that matter, and we'll have a roll call vote. Mary Masiallo?
Yes.
Arthur Rouse?
Yes.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Aye.
Bill Stokes?
Aye.
Joe McProwl, aye. Okay, can, Mary, Mary, can you be good enough to address the waiver?
Sure. I move that we vote to approve the waiver from Article 2, Section 400-17A, Subparagraph 1, Subparagraph A, requiring a signed and notarized affidavit by the owner stating that he or she will live in one of the units on a year-round basis.
And do I have a second?
Craig Chadwick, second.
Who's second, please?
Craig Chadwick, second.
Okay, Craig Chadwick, second, and we'll have a roll call vote. Mary Masiallo?
Yes.
Arthur Rouse?
Yes.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Aye.
Bill Stokes?
Aye.
Joe McProwl, aye. Time, if we can, I'm motion with respect to the special permit.
Yeah, Joe, this is Mary Maslowski. I move that we vote to approve with conditions a used special permit with waivers for PB 2020-09, Davenport Companies, for a two-family dwelling pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, Section 325-13A, dash 51 and dash 51N, as set forth in Mass General Law's Chapter 40A, Section 9, the property located at 424 Queen Anne Road, Lot 2, Map 70, Parcel B dash 1, in the R dash M District, based on the aforementioned findings of fact and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval, with the following conditions. One, all stormwater runoff generated within the subject property shall be controlled and infiltrated on the subject property. Two, the special permit decision shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. And three, any changes to the plan shall be subject to further planning board review.
Do I have a second? Bill Stokes. Bill Stokes, second. Okay, and we'll have a roll call vote. Mary Masiallo?
Yes.
Arthur Rouse?
Yes.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Aye.
Bill Stokes?
Aye.
Joe McProwl, aye. Okay, I think that completes 2020-09 on the Davenport Company. Next matter on the agenda is, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, would you like to request the continuance on this?
Uh, yeah, I'm sure I did. And what's your request, sir?
Like to request the continuance on this matter to provide additional information to the, the town planner that she requested and to further investigate some comments that the Conservation Commission made.
Okay, can I get a motion?
We need to-
Can I ask a date?
Go ahead, Charlene.
We need to know what date he wants it continued to. If it's May 12th, I would need all new information by this Friday.
Right. It's not gonna be May 12th because we won't be able to get you all that information.
So the next meeting-
How about June, how about June 9th?
We also have May 28th.
Arthur, which date is good for you?
So it's the 13th or the 28th of May?
No, it's May 12th, May 28th, which is a Thursday, and then June 9th is the following meeting.
May, May 28th would be good.
Joe, I can, I'll make the motion.
Go ahead, Mary. Go ahead.
So I moved, I moved that we continue PB 2020-11, Gerald E. Burke owner, Chair of William Croll Esquire, to the planning board meeting for Thursday, May 28th, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
And do I have a, do I have a second to that motion?
Craig Chadwick, second.
And roll, a roll, roll call vote.
We need to clarify who seconded, Joe. Was it?
I think it was Craig Chadwick.
Okay, and Dave Harris is now on the line?
Okay. On the line, audio but not video.
All right. You wouldn't want to see this group anyway. Okay, yeah, we'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Harris, are you, are you prepared to vote on this matter?
Uh, yeah, no, I didn't hear the, the, uh, beginning.
So I, I, I just won't ask you for a vote at this point. Uh, we, we need a vote on the continuance. Continuance to May 28th. Mary Masiallo?
Yes.
David Harris?
Aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Yes.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Aye.
Bill Stokes?
Aye.
Joe McProwl, aye. Matters continue to May 28th. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Steve Gepoyan and Suwavi Odev, and I believe this is a continued matter too, isn't it?
Uh, yes, sir. They have requested a continuance to June 9th, no sooner than 6:30 PM.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Joe, it's Mary Maslowski. I move that we continue PB 2020-02, Steve Gepoyan and Suwavi Odev. Actually, I have to, I'm sorry, Charlene.
Mary can't make this motion.
I need to, I need to recuse myself. Thanks.
Craig, can you make the motion?
Sure, make a motion that we continue PB 2020-02, Steve Gepoyan and Suwavi Odev to June 9th at 6:30 PM.
And we'll have a roll call vote. Mary Masiallo?
She recused herself, Joe.
Okay, David Harris?
Aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Here.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Aye.
Bill Stokes?
Aye.
Joe McProwl, aye. All right, hang on.
You seconded that motion, please?
I think I did.
Who, who was Craig Chadwick?
Craig made the motion. Bill Stokes.
Bill Stokes?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on, we'll move on on the agenda to the new business. And Adam Planning Director, talk to me about the Wayne Colson matter.
Well, actually Attorney Croll is here and Mr. Colson is also on the line. He will need to unmute himself. So they can, this is a request for a one-lot A&R on Old Campground Road, Euro Old Campground Road. So I will defer to them to make their presentation, sir.
Go ahead, vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Croll, representing Wayne Colson, trustee who owns the property, in question, it's, we're seeking an A&R plan, the board that's combining five lots, and is shown as Lot 3 on the plan that you have, you need the copy of. This property is located off of Gilbert Lane, and then the Old Campground Road provides frontage for the lot. And that road, as I indicated to Ms. Greenhouse in an email that I sent to her, that road was in existence prior to 1912. That area is known as Nickerson's Neck, and it was called the Old Campground Road because they used to have spiritualist revivalist meetings at the campground, just like the campgrounds in Harwichport. There was also, I also submitted, along with a copy of the assessing map, I submitted a copy of a deed in book 316, page 472, back in 1912, that refers to the area as Nickerson's Neck, and also says that the property is bounded in that deed on the south by the old campground road. I also submitted to her an unrecorded plan for Barinas-Nickerson. It's been used in that area by local attorneys. Alan Hunt used it in the past, I used it, and it shows this road extending from Gilbert Lane north, providing frontage- And it shows this road extending from Gilbert Lane north, uh, and providing frontage for the lots in question. So our intention is that the road, which I would call an ancient way, has been in existence prior to subdivision control when it went into effect in 1949 in Harwich. And that's one of the requirements for a way to provide frontage for a lot. We've also... The bylaw also calls for a finding by this board, um, that the way is of sufficient width and grade, um, to provide adequate access, um, for the lot in question. So my experience with the board in the past has been that you like to see a letter from the fire chief because the issue is whether there's, um, safe access for emergency access vehicles such as ambulances and fire trucks. So I submitted, um, uh, to Ms. Greenhouse a letter dated April 6, 2020, from Chief Norman Clark, in which he says he has reviewed the proposal and has done a site visit to the property on Old Campground Road in Harwich. The road's surface and clearances are proper and meet the fire department's criteria for safe access. I support Mr. Colson's acting... Mr. Colson acting as Colson Realty Trust in his request for approval. So I would submit that the fire chief is saying that it's safe and adequate access and that we have frontage, um, on Old Camp... Old Campground Road. I might also point out that, um, there's a dwelling, um, on Campground Road already, owned by Christopher Hemian, who was on the board, a member of the Harwich Board of Appeals for 10 to 15 years. He's resided there for over 30 years with his family. So the board had... The town has previously granted him a building permit, um, at least 30 years ago, um, finding that there was adequate frontage from Old Campground Road and that it was of sufficient access. And then about five to 10 years ago, um, there's a lot earlier, uh, on Old Campground Road on the left as you go in, and the town of Harwich obtained a building permit on that for that lot for an affordable housing building on Parcell A3 on the assessors map. So the town itself obtained a building permit, um, on the basis that Old Campground Road provided frontage and adequate access. So we would argue that we've met the burden for a frontage and access and would ask that the board endorse the plan. Thank you.
Counselor, can I just ask you a question? Did your client... Did he put the road in there initially?
No, it was... Wayne's old, but he wasn't around in 1912.
Okay. All right. All right. And can we hear from the, uh, from the town planner, please?
Uh, yes, sir, thank you.
I meant older Wayne. I meant older, not old.
I understand.
Um, in my staff report, it says revised plan is needed showing the FEMA flood information. Um, I just happened to look at my email just about 5 o'clock and something was sent at 5 o'clock. I did not have an opportunity to even look at that. Um, item number two, although the fire chief has provided a letter indicating that he finds the... That the road meets the fire department's criteria for safe access, I do continue to have concerns that Old Campground Road, whether that does provide for safe and adequate access and frontage. Um, the plan provided by the attorney is not a recorded plan. I've not... I've not been able to find a plan that actually shows Old Campground Road. Uh, four, if the board is satisfied by the information provided by the attorney, it should vote to endorse the plan as approved and required. Five, most important, if the board does vote to endorse the plan, it is unclear as to when it could actually be signed because Town Hall is currently closed and the governor just extended that one to May 18th. The plan, we've been advised by Town Council that plans to be reported, whether at the Registry of Deeds or the land court, should not be signed electronically, but should have true signatures on them. Uh, the police had no comment. Conservation has no issue with reconfiguration of lot lines. The owner is aware of a process for developing lots and conservation jurisdiction as he is going through it with neighboring lots. And the Health Department, when the lot is eventually developed, no variances from state or local regulations will be granted. Thank you.
May I make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. I have the Mylar right here if you want to come over to my house and sign it tonight, but, um, I also, in all seriousness, I have, um, the surveyor did indicate on the plan, the flood plain, uh, the FEMA information that Ms. Greenhouse requested. I apologize for not getting it to her sooner, but I could read it just so you folks know what it says. The plan noted on...
Please do.
Says Lot 3 is... Okay. Lot 3 is...
Go ahead and read them.
Within a high flood hazard area, community panel number 25001, 0612J, effective date July 16, 2014. And it's on the Mylar.
Now, at some point, I assume, what, you're going to record that Mylar?
After you folks put wet signatures on it, yes.
I got that. I understand. I understand. Okay, anybody else on the board have any questions or comments, uh, to the applicant? Uh, Bill Stokes? Go ahead, Bill.
I have a question. There's no note in this plan about how wide that road is. And do you have an answer for that, Bill?
It's, uh... Right name, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
It's because it's not a paved road as such or a town... A road taken by eminent domain, um, that's why you have the fire chief go out and determine in his judgment whether it's... Provides safe and adequate access.
And you provided us with the document that... In which he says it has?
Yes.
Okay, and that document will become part of the record?
It already is.
Okay, that will... All right, anybody else on the board have any questions or comments about this?
Yeah, this is Dave Harris. I... You may have covered this already, but how are we dealing with public comments in this format?
I believe, Charlene, that when we get to the end, the public can comment, right?
Um, if anybody wants to comment, they would need to speak up. Um, so far, we haven't had any public other than applicants and representatives. Um, I'm not quite sure if we have any new callers on the line. I do have a caller seven and a caller eight, but that could very well be somebody who is already on the line that we've already recognized, so...
All right, if caller seven or caller eight are members of the public and wish to be heard, they should speak up. Hearing none will continue. What do we need at this point, Charlene? A motion to close the public hearing?
It's not a public hearing, sir. The board would need to... If the board is ready to proceed, there are recommended findings of fact regarding the road, and then there is a board vote that would be necessary. Positive finding of the board, and there's a negative finding of the board.
Okay.
Joe, I have a question for Charlie.
Go ahead, Mary.
So, Charlene, what information would you need to... For you to say that it... You can get me the access and requirements? Um, because it looks like you're disagreeing... It sounds like you're disagreeing with the fire chief.
Uh, I do disagree with the fire chief. Um, personally, I would not drive my own car down that road, but, you know, this is not for me to make a determination. I just provide the board with the information that I have readily available. I think Mr. Stokes is correct in that there's no dimensions provided, um, you know, with the width of that road. Um, I, you know, no question based on some of the information that I've been provided that there was something shown on a plan at some point or on a map, but the references on the actual A&R plan, I looked at each and every one of those and frankly, they did not have a whole lot to do with, in my opinion, the road or the property that we're talking about. So I can just give you the information that I have available to me and it's up to you all to decide if you're satisfied with that information. I don't know if I...
Anybody else? Anybody else on the board have any questions upon that?
This is Craig.
Go ahead.
Um, I did... I did actually drive down the road the other day. And it was kind of a bumpy ride because there's a lot of potholes and it was actually right after the rain. But it didn't seem to be overgrown or anything like that. The width, again, I don't... I don't know what the width is, but it seemed adequate to me that two cars actually, you know, one going in and one coming out couldn't pass by each other. And I would suggest, you know, if the fire chief feels that it meets his requirements for, um, ability to get emergency apparatus down there, um, I'd feel comfortable with that from the chief.
Yeah, I was listening for that myself. Anybody else have any questions or comments about this?
Just one, um, strict, um, not strategic, but Mr. Rouse is not eligible to vote on this application as an alternate. Um, anything to do with subdivisions, he is not eligible to vote. So just so that's clear.
Okay. Okay.
Joe, it's Mary.
Yeah, go ahead, Mary.
So I... At this time, I would, um, move that we adopt the following findings of fact. That said plan does not constitute a subdivision of the way shown on the plan, the way in existence when the subdivision control law became effective in the town and has, in the opinion of the Planning Board, sufficient width, suitable grades and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land abutting thereon or served thereby, and for installation of municipal services to serve land and the buildings erected to or to be erected thereon.
Second. Was that the positive finding?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you.
Second by Mr. Chadwick.
Yeah, that was... Dave Harris seconded.
Dave Harris seconded.
I'm sorry... I'm very sorry, David. Okay, and we now have a roll call vote? Roll call vote. Mary Masiallo?
Yes.
Uh, David Harris?
Yes.
Arthur Rouse?
No, he's not eligible.
Not eligible.
I'm sorry. Craig Chadwick?
Uh, Craig Chadwick, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Aye.
Bill Stokes?
Aye.
Joe McClelland, aye. Okay, Mary, can you continue?
Um, I can, maybe.
Well...
Um, I move that the board endorse the A&R plan entitled Plan of Land in Harwich map, prepared for Wayne Colson, prepared by Moore Surveying, dated December 2nd, 2019, scale one inch equals 50 feet. And that is where my memo ends.
Second.
Okay, and if they want to get a roll...
Discussion before you move forward, Mr. Croll, what is the revised date?
What's that?
What... There's a revised date, I'm assuming, because the motion is not going to be consistent with the date on the revised plan.
Thank you.
So what do we... Do we have to do anything?
Let's just get the date first.
It says it's revised March 20, 2020.
Okay, so I'll amend my motion to say Moore Surveying dated December 2nd, 2019, revised March 20th, 2020?
Yes.
Scale one inch equals 50 feet.
Okay, and do I have a second? Do I have a second to Mary's motion?
Yeah, this is Dave Harris. I seconded and I agree with the amendment.
Okay, and we'll have a roll call vote? I think we're ready. Um, Mary Masiallo?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
Arthur Rouse?
No, he's not eligible.
Cannot... Not eligible.
Not eligible. Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Aye.
Bill Stokes?
Aye.
Joe McClelland, aye. Anything else on that, Charlene?
Uh, no, sir, that's it. Um, Bill, you're going to have to get that Mylar to me somehow and copies... Paper copies of the plan.
And I'll wait for your suggestions.
There's a drop box at Town Hall. You need to get it in a tube and drop it in the drop box at Town Hall.
Are they opening that because they've had experiences previously where they... People left things and they were never collected?
Uh, they are opening that and collecting it every morning, as far as I know.
Okay. We'll do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Charlene, do we have to do anything on this electronic signature thing?
Well, if the board wants to move forward, then it gets you do. Um, it is four items that the board needs to sign. The only thing that I can think of that may be coming up are covenant releases. That's really the only thing that you collectively sign as a group, unlike, say, Conservation where an order of conditions is signed by the whole Conservation Commission. The only thing we sign as a group is our covenants and covenant releases.
Could I interrupt for just a moment because it's very interesting and I'm sure Mr. Colson and I would like to stay, but how do we leave the meeting?
Just say bye and disconnect.
And disconnect. Just check the box, the X, Wayne.
No, you can do... At the very bottom, it says leave.
The little phone thing.
Oh, yeah, I see.
Not that I'm telling you to leave, it's just that's how you leave.
Beam me up, Scotty.
Thank you very much, Bill.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, I... With all due respect, I don't see any necessary need for this electronic signature thing, and I'd rather do it at a meeting when we're all there together at one bar. Is there any reason that we have to do it tonight?
Uh, no, sir.
Then we're not going to. All right, and then I'm going to put over the adoption of the minutes. I want to... There's a reason?
They're short.
Make a motion for the minutes of April 14th, 2020, as so written.
Okay. On a second.
Second.
Okay, and a roll call vote. Mary Masiallo?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
Arthur Rouse?
Yes.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Aye.
Bill Stokes?
Aye.
Joe McClelland, aye. Okay. Do we want to talk about this hearing meeting schedule, Charlene?
Yes, you need to.
We do?
Yes, you do. Because you need...
Okay, hang on.
I can review this more if you'd like.
Please.
Okay, so as the board knows, the town meeting obviously has been canceled and has been rescheduled for Monday, June 22nd, 2020. and has been rescheduled from March, June 22nd, 2020. Uh, the board has a regular meeting on Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020. Uh, quite typically, town meeting does go more than one evening. We don't know if that's going to stay the course this year or not. I know they're trying to skim down the council town meeting warrant. But bear on the side of caution, it is my recommendation that, uh, the, the schedule goes from the Tuesday, June 23rd meeting to a Thursday, June 25th meeting.
Okay, and, and actually, um, I'm looking at a document that says revised 2020 Howard's planning board schedule, and that date is reflected on the one that I'm looking at.
Because it's a draft. You've got, you have to approve it for me to be able to post this.
I understand.
So what I'm looking for.
Did anybody else? Did everybody else get a copy, copy of this schedule?
Yes.
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 Okay. Anybody have any problems with it?
Nope. No.
We'll have a roll call vote to adopt the revised 2020 Howard's planning board schedule.
You need a motion in a second, sir.
Mary Masiallo made a motion.
This is Mary. I move that we adopt the revised planning board schedule.
Okay, in a second.
Craig Chadwick, second.
Okay, and we'll have a roll call vote. Mary Masiallo.
Yeah.
David Harris.
Yes.
Arthur Rouse.
Yes.
Craig Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Uh, Alan Peterson.
Aye.
Bill Stokes.
Aye.
Joe McPhee, aye. All right, Charlene, anything else?
That's what I thought.
Okay, thank you all. You, you, I got to tell you, I, I took the time the other night to sit and watch the board of selectmen try to go through this soon process. And I have to say that I think we, we did it much easier and, and much, and much smoother. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mary Masiallo to adjourn, seconded by, uh, uh, Arthur Rouse. And, uh, we'll have a roll call on that. Mary Masiallo.
Aye.
David Harris.
Aye.
Arthur Rouse.
Aye.
Craig Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Alan Peterson.
Aye.
Bill Stokes.
Aye.
Joe McPhee, aye. Thank you again for your cooperation.
Thanks, everyone.